United States of America, to do it all with your hands, for a nation under God, and for the people, and for justice for all.
Very good. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Barack Champaign, father of Jody Lamb, father of sister, Thelisa Champaign and Jody Champaign, and grandfather to Samantha. Do you need to order for eight nineteen two thousand twenty five? Motion to approve those, please.
Several.
Second. Questions, comments, objections, on paper? Motion to review and approve the minutes for the market at the P.
Several.
Second. Questions? Dr. Meyer will turn the celebration room to you.
Okay, so tonight we have normally new students and staff of the month. Tonight's a little special. We have students of the month, but we're going to recognize our retirees this year. We are going to start with the students, so I'm going to have Principal Sermack nod up to recognize the high school student of the month.
Good evening, everyone. So the May student of the month is Michael Barrientos nominated by a staff member. I'd like to read what the staff member wrote. Michael, one up. So it reads, "I would like to nominate Clinton High School junior Michael Barrientos for student of the month for exceptional initiative and leadership. While working at the CHS blood drive, Michael discovered and applied to the CHNA nine Youth Advisory Council, earning his spot as one of only eleven selected students. The council advocates for critical issues including mental health awareness, homelessness, and educational access throughout Massachusetts. Recently, Michael volunteered to deliver a speech on diversity to an audience that included Congressman Jim McGovern and several state senators and representatives. With support from his teachers, Mr. Moisen, Mrs. Ford, Mrs. Elliott, and Mr. Young, he overcame his nervousness and represented our school proudly. Michael exemplifies initiative, courage, and dedication to positive change. He plans to apply these new leadership skills to help make CHS an even more inclusive environment for everyone." Michael Barrientos.
United States of America, to do it all with your hands, for a nation under God, and for the people, and for justice for all.
Very good. Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Barack Champaign, father of Jody Lamb, father of sister, Thelisa Champaign and Jody Champaign, and grandfather to Samantha. Thank you. Do you need to order for eight nineteen two thousand twenty five? Motion to approve those, please.
Several.
Second. Questions, comments, objections, on paper?
Aye.
Motion to review and approve the minutes for the market at the P.
Several.
Second. Dr. Meyer will turn the celebration room to you.
Okay, so tonight we have normally new students and staff of the month. Tonight's a little special. We have students of the month, but we're going to recognize our retirees this year. We are going to start with the students, so I'm going to have Principal Sermack nod up to recognize the high school student of the month.
Good evening, everyone. So the May student of the month is Michael Barrientos nominated by a staff member. I'd like to read what the staff member wrote. Michael, one up. So it reads, "I would like to nominate Clinton High School junior Michael Barrientos for student of the month for exceptional initiative and leadership. While working at the CHS blood drive, Michael discovered and applied to the CHNA nine Youth Advisory Council, earning his spot as one of only eleven selected students. The council advocates for critical issues including mental health awareness, homelessness, and educational access throughout Massachusetts. Recently, Michael volunteered to deliver a speech on diversity to an audience that included Congressman Jim McGovern and several state senators and representatives. With support from his teachers, Mr. Moisen, Mrs. Ford, Mrs. Elliott, and Mr. Young, he overcame his nervousness and represented our school proudly. Michael exemplifies initiative, courage, and dedication to positive change. He plans to apply these new leadership skills to help make CHS an even more inclusive environment for everyone." Michael Barrientos.
All right, and Principal Steffi from the middle school is unable to be here tonight, but he's asked Principal Silvio to give out his awards, and then she'll give out the elementary school award after that.
All right, the first student that we are recognizing from the middle school is Grace Rerick. So come on up. Sorry. All right, Mr. Steffi says that Grace shows leadership as she participates in student council and is a PBIS ambassador. She shows great responsibility, time management, and work ethic. Something's haven't changed. Her academic excellence and intrinsic motivation is evident every day. She strives to do her best on every task that is given to her. She is patient and kind to all her peers. She works hard to teach other students who need her help. Grace wants to be a teacher one day and is well on her way. Lastly, Mr. Steffi would like to add that she is an asset and a leader in the classroom with her insightful comments and thoughtful participation. She exemplifies all of the qualities we value here at Clinton Middle School. Another student, Riley Nye. Come on up. All right, we have Riley is an outstanding example of a student with dedication and drive. She consistently works hard and never backs down from a challenge. She is a motivated student whose positive attitude and willingness to help her peers make her a valued member of our classroom and school community. She is truly special. She has every characteristic you would like to see in a sixth grader. Yeah, another student hasn't changed. This is so nice. She works hard, is so kind to others, responsible, respectful, hardworking, supportive of her peers, and so well-rounded. She's a role model to everyone around her. She is smart, witty, and just an all-around great kid. Riley is going to do amazing things in this world. Congratulations, Riley. And now I am going to do the elementary school student of the month. Sawyer, are you ready? Do you think you can come up? All right, come on up. This is Sawyer Breslow. Hi Sawyer. Sawyer was nominated by a team of teachers at the elementary school, and these are the things that they said about you. "A team of teachers nominated Sawyer for student of the month to represent Clinton Elementary School," look at your mom, "for the May twenty twenty five. And on May fourteenth, I got to have lunch in the cafeteria with him and knew that out of all the hard choices of nominations, it had to be him. Sawyer is a very hard-working and humble student that takes all of his academic responsibility very seriously. At the same time, he is always willing and ready to help other students when asked. He is very patient and has skills to guide other students. His friends feel comfortable asking him for assistance, and he will readily take the time to help. So often, when one walks into his classroom during our wind block, one can find him quietly sitting next to another student and guiding them through a question that they have asked. Sawyer clearly respects that all other people have challenges in areas where he can provide assistance. Sawyer himself has been with us since pre-
... and all the hard work they put in in their career for the students here. And it's always a treat to see all the students of the month, so congratulations to all of you. It's kept such a great recognition, and I think, I don't even know, do you have a month left in the school year?
Just under.
Just under. So it's really, if I recall, when I was a student, it's hard to get, and all the hard work they put in in their career for the students here. And it's always a treat to see all the students of the month, so congratulations to all of you. It's kept such a great recognition, and I think, I don't even know, do you have a month left in the school year?
Just under.
Just under. So it's really, if I recall, when I was a student, it's hard to get, when you're so close to summer, concentrate on your schoolwork. So congratulations to all of you. That's a huge achievement. But to turn to our retirees, I wanted to, one of the best things about being a state rep is being able to honor, you know, incredible community residents here in Clinton of the work that they've done and the achievements that they've had, and certainly all the teachers here who are being recognized have done so much throughout their career to help so many students learn and grow and really plant those foundations and seeds for their future. So I'm going to read this off, just, they all are the same thing with the names of each of the teachers and the years that they've served, but in just the interest of time, I'll read this off so you can all hear it. "The Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the House of Representatives, be it hereby known to all that the Massachusetts House of Representatives offers its sincereest congratulations to teacher in recognition of the joyous occasion of your retirement after the number of years of your service. And the entire membership extends its very best wishes and expresses the hope for future good and good fortune and continued successful endeavors. Given this nineteenth day of May twenty twenty five at the State House in Boston, Massachusetts, and assigned by the Speaker of the House and myself, Megan Kilcoyne," and this is what it looks like. And it's hopefully a small token of all the work that you've all achieved. And I'll turn it back to Dr. Meyer now.
All right, so Megan, go ahead.
All right, this evening I have the great honor of recognizing four remarkable retirees from Clinton Elementary School. Each of them has dedicated over twenty years to our district, except for one, but dog years maybe, sort of. And I've had the privilege of growing alongside of them in my career in Clinton, starting as a substitute teacher and then continuing into my current role. So first, I would like to recognize Shelley Eckert. Come on up. Hi Shelley, so good to see you. Shelley had retired earlier this year, and she has devoted twenty-one years of service as an instructional assistant. Over the years, she supported students in kindergarten, preschool, she worked one-on-one with students who needed extra care in classrooms. She even worked in my classroom as a teacher for a while, and she concluded her career in our ABA classroom. Shelley was deeply committed to her students and was always dependable and collaborative member of our CES team. We want to thank her for her dedication, and we wish you all the best in your retirement moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
We're going to get to do a picture. Photo up. Come on Shelley, she loves pictures.
Want to take a step in or?
Can we enter out?
I'm sorry.
Here, why don't I hold this for you?
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. One, two.
Congratulations, Shelley.
Thanks. Thanks.
Congratulations and thank you.
All right, next we have Janine Ngano.
Congratulations.
Janine retired right around the Christmas break and walked into her forever summer, and her absence was deeply felt. She retired after twenty-five years with Clinton Public Schools. She is a talented professional who always knew and knows how to lift your spirits, especially when you needed it most. I was fortunate to work with her early in my career when she served as a Title I assistant. She supported reading instruction in my classroom, forming strong, trusting relationships with students and staff alike. Through her many roles, she did what she could to build the confidence of her students. Janine had a nurturing, motherly way of guiding young educators like me, and I'll always be grateful for that. I miss her effects. Sometimes all it took was a glance in the hallway and she'd be in my office knowing I needed a word of encouragement. Janine, thank you for the years of service. I hope your next chapter is filled with joy, family, lots of cooking and baking, don't forget to bring me some, and all the things that make you happiest. The sublist is always available too.
Have you also?
Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Congratulations.
All right. Then we have Susan Landis-Town.
Congratulations.
Come on up. Susan will be stepping into her forever summer at the end of this school year, after giving twenty-one years as a speech and language pathologist to the town of Clinton. Susan has made a profound impact on countless children and families, and I'm confident she remembers every single one of them. Her belief in her students is evident in everything she does. She is their fiercest supporter and cheerleader. Susan has also contributed immensely to the growth of her colleagues, and her presence will truly be missed. We wish her a retirement filled with nature, running, dogs, and quality time with her son and daughter-in-law.
Close with that.
Very nice.
One, two, three.
Get that to me as well.
You already did, but I didn't. Congratulations, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And one more.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, finally, we have Maggie McNally. All right, Maggie joined our CES team in two thousand sixteen. She comforted staff, mostly me, and students, and has taught us most about life. Maggie showed us that life is better with a four-legged friend. She always listened, and she kept the best secrets. She showed us that when life throws something at you, you should definitely chase it, and she showed us love and loyalty. Maggie is missed at CES, but we hope she enjoys retirement with the McNally family, and it is filled with beach days, tennis balls, and endless cheese, ice cream, and whatever else she wants. Please join me in celebrating Maggie.
Too low profile for me.
We'll get it over to you. Here.
Oh, yeah. I see that.
Go back here so you can give her a pet on the way back.
We have two more retirees. The next one is not here tonight, which is good, because that way he doesn't have to follow Maggie. But I did want to recognize Dave Van Ass. Dave Van Ass retired on December thirteenth after forty years of service at Clinton Public Schools as a food service director. Food service is a difficult and often underappreciated role in the public school system. And while it's impossible to make everyone happy all the time, Dave always tried to make sure he did what was best to take care of the kids. This really showed during COVID when Dave and his staff found a way to get meals to students during that difficult time. Dave Van Ass, or Vinnie, and school lunches have been almost synonymous with each other in Clinton for many years, and I want to thank him and recognize him for his service to Clinton Public Schools. Actually, every year it was like, this might be the year, this might be the year. Yes, she did it. So Marilyn started in Clinton Public Schools on September twelfth nineteen eighty-eight. She's wrapping up her thirty-seventh school year in the role at central office. Over the last eight years, Marilyn and I have worked closely together, and I've really come to appreciate her attention to detail and the care that she puts in her work. I always say the easiest way to make employees mad is to mess up their paychecks. And one good thing about my time here in Clinton is that I could always count on those being prepared correctly by Marilyn. Marilyn takes great pride in being accurate and on time. She spends a lot of time putting together retirement paperwork, ensuring that retirement contributions are made and recorded with the MTRS, and to make sure that all your retirement contributions are taken care of too. Marilyn's also very close with her family. We'd often have discussions about her grandchildren, and you could tell how proud she is of them as they progress throughout the school system. Marilyn, you'll certainly be missed. That's why I'm hoping we can keep you around a little bit after your retirement. I want to thank you for your service at Clinton Public Schools, and congratulations on your well-deserved time.
Marilyn, congratulations.
Thank you.
Picture for you.
One, two, three.
In San Jose, Brittany's the highlight of your day. Congratulations.
All right. So this is usually the part of the program where we can invite you to stay for the rest of the agenda, and that's not normally anything anyone takes me up on. So instead of doing that, we're going to take a ten or fifteen-minute recess. There's some refreshments in the back right-hand corner for you. Feel free to take pictures. Congratulations to all the award winners and our retirees. We appreciate your service, and we'll pick up the program in about ten or fifteen minutes.
For the only game in town.
Oh, no, the school game's right now, too. That's right.
We won't invite you to another meeting to recognize you. I just didn't want to get presumptuous of who's not on school today yet. You never know until it's over.
You never know. That's right.
They don't know what to do.
How are you? I'm built, please.
And then when I ran across somebody, Bill yelled out, "The second woman to cross the road line." I was like, "Oh, yeah." It's been a morale booster for her.
I saw you got some press.
Yeah. Yeah.
These ones, these ones we get are bacon. But it's always like.
I wonder how long it takes for one to go through.
Some 3D printer, or as far as. We got a little 3D printer though. Not this one. This is like, you can barely make plastic stand together. But it's actually my oldest printer that's working.
Are you stuck in traffic for years?
But the. That's a nonstop.
Hi, I want to go there. I hear great things. What was their menu?
Maggie, what's up? How's it going?
It was good. Yeah.
How far is it from here?
Maddie? Okay, great. Okay, great. Oh, I probably.
Wow.
Oh, great. What did he say?
Bye, Marilyn.
Keep forward, yeah.
Like they're hesitant to go? Like tea or something?
I can't, I can't play tennis today. I can't play tennis. It was so cold.
They have them on site?
Even when it's August, it's 75. It's not like nice.
I am. I feed your stuff all the time.
Ready's doing the business of the people. Think they call us a filibuster. All right, Freddie, book club's open. Let's go. I have the gavel. Power? I'm with you, Jen.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we should be good to go on Monday now. Nine o'clock, right?
Bring this thing back to order.
Weather was good right now. All right.
Good day, seeing you. Hey, by the way, you make me sweat every year. I know you're going to be here, but it's like 7:03.
I'm so sorry. I was, I was.
All right, thank you. It's okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll bring the meeting back to order, and we will open up to ask if there's any public comment for this evening. Seeing none. All right. Student rep. It's our award winner. Double duty tonight.
Hello, everyone. So for today's meeting, firstly, on Wednesday, April 16th, members of student, of Clinton High School Student Council had the opportunity to attend Central District Massachusetts Association of Student Council's Spring Conference. It's pretty much a conference. It was hosted in Oakmont University, or Oakmont High School. And it was, there were engaging workshop sessions with over 15 options to choose from. And each activity encouraged teamwork, collaboration, leadership, and other sorts of development. And then in total, there were seven CHS students who attended. And it was the very first Central District Conference that Clinton has attended, or one of the first. And we just are hope to attend more in the future. And then on May 9th, Clinton High School had a guest speaker come and talk to, like, Clinton, the entire school about the importance of mental health awareness and getting rid of stigmas surrounding mental health. We partnered with Kyle Care, which is an organization whose mission is to promote honest communication about mental health challenges experienced by teens and young adults. And then we had a guest speaker named Mallory. She was a great speaker with lots of energy. She expressed challenges in an open environment while keeping everyone engaged and listening. After the presentation, there was an engaging activity that everyone broke into in classrooms that included putting a green bandana on one's backpack in order to promote and to exemplify mental health. And then students also participated in a brief survey and debriefing session within their classes. The student council is also looking forward to continuing their partnership with Kyle Care. And there was a lot of positive feedback from the, both the faculty and the students. Thirdly, on Saturday, May 9th, the student council partnered with the Massachusetts DCR for DAM Day. Big deal for Clinton, obviously. Students volunteered and participated in a guided walk proctored by the DCR. And Sadie Mendez, who is a member of the senior class student council, was given the honor of unlocking the DAM gate for all to enjoy. We hope to keep this partnership with the DCR continuing and helping with coordinating DAM Day for years to come. And finally, the nominations for the 2025 to 2026 student council are now, like, open, and the speeches will take place next week. We want to thank all the senior council members for their hard work and service of their class of 2025, especially President Julia Parento, Vice President Chris Baynard, Treasurer Ricky Walsh, Secretary Sadie Mendez, and Representative Ella Askren and Alexis Octavius. We wish you the best of luck and thank you for, obviously, all your hard work. And thank you, guys.
Anything from the CTA this evening? Thank you. PTA? Hey, Emily.
Hi, Matt. I missed you.
Listen, welcome back.
I kept all my notes for tonight.
Oh, wow. That's a lot. Did you put on reading the whole thing? Okay.
Good evening, everyone. Okay, so our quick update for today. We currently sit at 174 members. We still would like to see 300 by the end of the school year, just in a month. We won't give up. We're still going to try. Our PTA scholarship application closed on April 30th with three applicants, and the committee has chosen recipients and is in the process of notifying the winners. They'll be presented during their award ceremony. At our May 7th PTA meeting, the board and PTA members voted unanimously to support the funding of a booster fund glow run at CES. The upfront cost of the fundraiser is $2,000. And earlier this month, we had a local business step up to sponsor that upfront cost in full. At this time, they wish to remain anonymous, and we will.
Hi, I want to go there. I hear great things. What was their menu?
Maggie, what's up? How's it going?
It was good. Yeah.
How far is it from here?
Maddie? Okay, great. Okay, great. Oh, I probably. Okay.
Wow.
Oh, great. What did he say?
Bye, Marilyn.
Keep forward, yeah.
Like they're hesitant to go? Like tea or something?
I can't, I can't play tennis today. I can't play tennis. It was so cold.
They have them on site?
Even when it's August, it's 75. It's not like nice.
I am. I feed your stuff all the time.
Ready's doing the business of the people. Think they call us a filibuster.
PTA was also proud to support Mr. Steffi during his rooftop camping trip, dropping off snacks and supplies. Our content that was on Facebook was also shared by the Massachusetts PTA, and they extended their congratulations to CMS and Mr. Steffi for their MCAS attendance. We are still gathering all the dates for the year for the PTA calendar that will be put together over the summer. Because why not? It's expected that we will have a $1,500 cost for that, and we'll be reaching out for sponsors the next couple of weeks. Our last meeting of the year, which does not close out what we do over the summer, is June 5th, and obviously, all are invited.
Emily, didn't the little league sponsor that calendar last year?
Yes, they did. I think I've reached out to Mr. Varakis about that on Facebook so far. So we'll see. We'll, okay. All right. That's about it.
I think next, next year, if I'm going to have to be a checkout guy for pre-K, I need to go in the week before and do a lesson on how sales tax works. There's a lot of that.
And that's why we covered a lot of it, because kids come up and the book's $9.99, they have $10 to spend, and everybody gets apprehended.
But it was great, and you guys did a great job. And between the, whatever, there was a scholastic dollar spot or something like that that we could just kind of cut. Yeah, it's like, okay, there's a little, little bit missing. We'll just cover it right there. That was good. So it was, it's, it's, it was, you guys do a lot of, a lot of work with that. It was, it was, it was fun to.
We didn't even make a dent in the scholastic dollars that we already had, even with all that we spent. It's like just, we spent it, and it just added right back in. So it's amazing, and we can order great products and stuff on there that we use for the Halloween walk. We do it for teacher appreciation, obviously, books for the library and equipment, and it works out very well.
It always strikes me when I hear things like, there was three applicants, because I think the Clinton community does such an amazing job making money available. Like, people fundraise, and they put money in the bank and say, please apply. And I don't think the kids realize like just how much money is available to them and how expensive it can be to go to school. So I know it's probably too late for this deadline, but like, and it's probably not a single child at home watching this right now. But apply for these scholarships. The money's there. They'd love to give it away.
We would. And it's in the budget every year, so. Okay, all right.
Thanks, Emily.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything from CPAC this evening? Or LPAC? Hand it over to you, Dr. Meyer.
All right, thank you. I got a text from Mr. Zapantis that he was going to be late, but he didn't realize it was a retiree celebration. So his tennis bus got here. Did you guys at least, how'd you do?
Lost in the third set.
All right, well.
It was only 37 degrees and windy. I'm sure that was awesome. That was awesome.
All right, so Mr. Zapantis is starting to lay the groundwork for a 2028 trip to Europe. And I know that sounds early, or it sounds like far away, I guess, but the plan is to get it approved now so they can start signing students right away in the fall, so they have a longer, if students want to commit, they have a longer time period to stretch out the payments. So I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about the trip?
Yeah. This trip coming up, just some background for the members who might be new. I ran a trip last year to Europe. That was pretty successful. We're running one next year, 2026, that's sold out. And I just want to get this one, you know, off the ground early next ball for 2028. We're planning on flying into Switzerland, into Zurich, going down to Lucerne, going through northern Italy, Cinque Terre, over to Monaco, French Riviera, Avignon, France, and then ending in Barcelona. So one thing about my trips, I like to squeeze a lot in. I think the kids like that as well. They don't get bored of one place, and we see a lot. The reason why, again, we, post-COVID, Mr. Sirmak and I spoke about, you know, trying to get on a good cycle, a two-year cycle, to give families time to pay for these, because like everything, it's, the cost is creeping up. And just to give families as much time as we can to pay for it, I think it'd be really beneficial to get as many kids on it as we can. So we're going to be using EF Tours, who the schools use for many years now. They're probably one of the leaders in educational travel. So some of the itinerary is there. That, that price is a little high. It has some things I'm going to cut out along with, they also give you like a $200 discount when you sign up early. So we'll probably be closer to around $4,500, I would say. And then over the two years, it's, I think, around $130 per month. Just trying to keep it affordable.
Yeah. So even though this, normally, these, these trips do typically run right over the April vacation, it is essentially kind of school-sponsored travel. So we do, according to our policy, need a vote from the school committee to approve it before he's supposed to collect any money or have kids make any deposits. So that's why we're here tonight. So if you are okay with Mr. Zapantis starting to get this out there, I'd look for a motion to approve the trip.
Any questions, interns? I'll just say from a comment perspective, there's a lot of talk about your trip already for next year. Kids are super excited about it, so thanks for all the work you're doing on that. Let's talk to the A.D. and let her know how many spring athletes are on your trip, and make sure we don't have games. April vacation next week, next year, because you have a lot of excited kids, and I think they all play something in the spring.
And that's something I think more and more schools are seeing, you know, that kids are busy during break. Last year in Germany, we ran into Tinsbrueg, and their A.D. was in the airport with us.
That's awesome.
They get it. They get it.
No, kudos to you, because the kids are psyched about it, and it's a great way for them to see the world, so.
Awesome. That's awesome.
And if you need any extra chaperone.
I was going to say, we're supporting your travel habit here, and we'll go with you. All in favor? Thanks, Paul. Appreciate it. Thank you.
All right. So the next couple of agenda items, just kind of give you some feedback.
High School, aimed at ensuring students are both workforce-ready and prepared for college. Clinton and the surrounding towns have numerous manufacturing facilities, creating a strong demand for skilled workers. Establishing this pathway within our district will greatly benefit both our students as well as broader community. After receiving an implementation grant, we partnered with a consultant to develop a comprehensive pathway utilizing the classes we already currently offer at Clinton High School. We submitted Part B of the application to DUSI in October and we're thrilled to be invited to move on to Part B in December. After submitting Part B in February, we received wonderful news at the STEM Summit on May 7th from Lieutenant Governor Driscoll and Secretary Tatwiler that Clinton High School has officially received a designation for our first innovation pathway. This pathway requires students to complete two technical courses and two advanced courses. The technical courses include Engineering Innovation, which is a class that the majority of our freshmen already currently take, and then Engineering Design. The advanced courses are pre-calculus, along with the choice between AP Computer Science A or Project Leadaway Computer Science Essentials. These classes are designed to provide students a strong foundation in STEM, preparing students for careers in the advanced manufacturing and engineering fields. In addition, students will engage in a 100-hour internship or capstone project. We are grateful Mas Hire, to Mas Hire for helping us to secure partnerships with two industry leaders. Both Nyper Mould and J. Bill have agreed to partner with us. Their senior leadership visited CHS back in February to discuss collaboration with our team, including me, Superintendent Meyer, Principal Sermac, and CHS teachers Dave Hilton and Kathy Curry. To further strengthen these partnerships, our Engineering Design classes visited Nyper Mould's facility in Clinton and J. Bill's facility is debent this school year already. Mas Hire reimbursed us for the transportation for these field trips as well. As part of this pathway, students will earn industry-recognized credentials, including OCEAN Onshape certifications, ensuring they're workforce-ready. Additionally, by taking the advanced courses, they'll be well-prepared for those who decide to pursue higher education. And then finally, I'd just like to highlight that newly-designed Innovation Career Pathways programs are eligible for up to a $75,000 grant, which will further support our efforts. Thank you.
That's great, that's great news.
I forget that question Scott gave me. Never mind, I just turned over the job.
So, Katie's done a great job on this, it's been a lot of work and every, every step that, you know, I've been included on has been, you know, great. We had a really nice meeting when you had the industry partners up here. I thought that went really well. So, you know, we were very excited to get this designation and we're crossing our fingers on the early college one still, right? I think they're doing that one in June, right? So, we'll see. But she's been working on both those and she does a nice job. And when I send her random grants and I say, what do you think about this? She's just like, sure, let me look at it. So, that's good. All right, so that was, that's exciting news. Next in your packet is, it says OLA TFM Feedback. So, OLA is the Office of Language Acquisition. So, TFM is our Targeted and Focused Monitoring Report. So, they, every three years, they come. And this year, this is a bunch of the, this summary has the indicators that they looked at. And overall, if you get to the, you know, almost all of the indicators, we scored as implemented. One of them, we scored as partially implemented. That was on ELE5, which are Program and Services. And we had a meeting, so we're working on our, they call it a SIMP Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan, so that we can look at addressing some of that and we'll be doing some of that work over the summer. A lot of it will really be looking just at our, our access data, which is the testing that our English learners take, trying to triangulate that with some of the other classroom and MCAS data, and also looking at their schedules and making sure that we're delivering those services. But overall, you know, one partially implemented is not bad, so we'll be able to work on that. And then the next one is the Special Education TFM Feedback. This was sort of a summary that I generated because we don't have the official report from them. We kind of have a draft report and it was 33 pages. So, I tried to summarize it down to two for you. There were two indicators for the special ed that were identified. Both of those had to do with timelines, so none of it was really the process in terms of what we're doing. It was just that when they do like a record review, we had a couple that we didn't get the determination of eligibility within 45 days, or we didn't get the determination of placement provision to the parent within 10 days. And we do know that some of that might have been attributable to the fact that we, beginning of the year, we were, we were shifting IEPs to Infinite Campus and then we weren't happy with that and we kind of shifted them back to East Bed. And in that, there are some records, I think, that threw off some of our timelines, so...
Never mind, I just turned over the job.
So, Katie's done a great job on this, it's been a lot of work and every, every step that, you know, I've been included on has been, you know, great. We had a really nice meeting when you had the industry partners up here. I thought that went really well. So, you know, we were very excited to get this designation and we're crossing our fingers on the early college one still, right? I think they're doing that one in June, right? So, we'll see. But she's been working on both those and she does a nice job. And when I send her random grants and I say, what do you think about this? She's just like, sure, let me look at it. So, that's good. All right, so that was, that's exciting news. Next in your packet is, it says OLA TFM Feedback. So, OLA is the Office of Language Acquisition. So, TFM is our Targeted and Focused Monitoring Report. So, they, every three years, they come. And this year, this is a bunch of the, this summary has the indicators that they looked at. And overall, if you get to the, you know, almost all of the indicators, we scored as implemented. One of them, we scored as partially implemented. That was on ELE5, which are Program and Services. And we had a meeting, so we're working on our, they call it a SIMP Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan, so that we can look at addressing some of that and we'll be doing some of that work over the summer. A lot of it will really be looking just at our, our access data, which is the testing that our English learners take, trying to triangulate that with some of the other classroom and MCAS data, and also looking at their schedules and making sure that we're delivering those services. But overall, you know, one partially implemented is not bad, so we'll be able to work on that. And then the next one is the Special Education TFM Feedback. This was sort of a summary that I generated because we don't have the official report from them. We kind of have a draft report and it was 33 pages. So, I tried to summarize it down to two for you. There were two indicators for the special ed that were identified. Both of those had to do with timelines, so none of it was really the process in terms of what we're doing. It was just that when they do like a record review, we had a couple that we didn't get the determination of eligibility within 45 days, or we didn't get the determination of placement provision to the parent within 10 days. And we do know that some of that might have been attributable to the fact that we, beginning of the year, we were, we were shifting IEPs to Infinite Campus and then we weren't happy with that and we kind of shifted them back to East Bed. And in that, there are some records, I think, that threw off some of our timelines, so... But overall, that was another one that was very positive. Those are easily correctable to go through, so...
Steve, is the long-term goal to still get those into Infinite Campus or did we just decide it wasn't probably the appropriate use of doing it that way?
I think the long-term goal would still to be to try to get it in Infinite Campus, but we need, I think at this point, we need to wait till the Infinite Campus module gets a little bit more developed for the Massachusetts IEP. So, I think what we found was it wasn't quite, you know, Massachusetts just went through a new IEP process and all that kind of stuff and, and it really wasn't quite, you know, Infinite Campus is not more than just Massachusetts, so they hadn't made all the kind of tweaks for it. So, I think someday, obviously, yes, the more I can house everything in one system, the...
Never mind, I just turned over the job.
So, Katie's done a great job on this, it's been a lot of work and every, every step that, you know, I've been included on has been, you know, great. We had a really nice meeting when you had the industry partners up here. I thought that went really well. So, you know, we were very excited to get this designation and we're crossing our fingers on the early college one still, right? I think they're doing that one in June, right? So, we'll see. But she's been working on both those and she does a nice job. And when I send her random grants and I say, what do you think about this? She's just like, sure, let me look at it. So, that's good. All right, so that was, that's exciting news. Next in your packet is, it says OLA TFM Feedback. So, OLA is the Office of Language Acquisition. So, TFM is our Targeted and Focused Monitoring Report. So, they, every three years, they come. And this year, this is a bunch of the, this summary has the indicators that they looked at. And overall, if you get to the, you know, almost all of the indicators, we scored as implemented. One of them, we scored as partially implemented. That was on ELE5, which are Program and Services. And we had a meeting, so we're working on our, they call it a SIMP Continuous Improvement Monitoring Plan, so that we can look at addressing some of that and we'll be doing some of that work over the summer. A lot of it will really be looking just at our, our access data, which is the testing that our English learners take, trying to triangulate that with some of the other classroom and MCAS data, and also looking at their schedules and making sure that we're delivering those services. But overall, you know, one partially implemented is not bad, so we'll be able to work on that. And then the next one is the Special Education TFM Feedback. This was sort of a summary that I generated because we don't have the official report from them. We kind of have a draft report and it was 33 pages. So, I tried to summarize it down to two for you. There were two indicators for the special ed that were identified. Both of those had to do with timelines, so none of it was really the process in terms of what we're doing. It was just that when they do like a record review, we had a couple that we didn't get the determination of eligibility within 45 days, or we didn't get the determination of placement provision to the parent within 10 days. And we do know that some of that might have been attributable to the fact that we, beginning of the year, we were, we were shifting IEPs to Infinite Campus and then we weren't happy with that and we kind of shifted them back to East Bed. And in that, there are some records, I think, that threw off some of our timelines, so... But overall, that was another one that was very positive. Those are easily correctable to go through, so...
Steve, is the long-term goal to still get those into Infinite Campus or did we just decide it wasn't probably the appropriate use of doing it that way?
I think the long-term goal would still to be to try to get it in Infinite Campus, but we need, I think at this point, we need to wait till the Infinite Campus module gets a little bit more... I don't think it's gonna happen next year at this point, based on our new information. Another big one was some of the placeholders that we had in like subs. We had some increases in the sub-line. We decreased that with the athletic director. We kind of went through that budget, took some out. The advisors and the, oh, since we finalized the teacher contract and we sort of have a tentative agreement with the Unit D contract, we updated those salaries to reflect actuals of the new agreements. So, all those changes are in there. So, it's, you know, it's more accurate. I think overall, you know, we ended up cutting, oh, the other big one, we cut, we cut about $100,000 out of Chromebooks, okay? And I know it might seem counterintuitive that what's happening right now is with some of the uncertainty and some of the tariff stuff that was happening, a lot of Chromebooks, they either, you couldn't get them or the prices went way up. So, what we decided is we're, instead of trying to replace two grades worth of Chromebooks next year, as of right now, we're planning on trying to just replace one. And even with that, Chris thinks we might be able to hold off, oh, actually, no, I think what we did is we were trying to order, get an order in now on one of them so that we could pay for it right in July 1st, so we could try to get them since a lot of them are out of stock. But the idea was, since the price went up a little bit, not to add more money to that line and do two, but to focus on one grade and cut it back. And then, and he felt comfortable with the current state of our technology that we could, we could handle that for a year. So, the, so overall, that was, you know, we had a meeting and tried to just go through and see where we could find some savings. It's not great to tap into the circuit breaker like that, but that's why it's there. The other thing is with our out-of-district tuition costs going up so much, we will probably qualify for what's called extraordinary relief next year, which means we should get sort of additional circuit breaker funds back that we can hopefully use to, basically, extraordinary relief has to be used in the same year. So, it essentially means we would tap into less of this because we would get those funds to, to offset the cost next year. So, so overall, it's not a panic, it's just we've got to see how things fall into place and we'll, we'll adjust based on, just like we do every year, when we see who's actually here in September, we'll, we'll make our adjustments and we'll, we'll figure it out, so... Any questions on budget version C? Oh, I think I should probably have you guys take a vote to approve it if you're comfortable with it, so that when it's at the town meeting, it's school committee approved.
I will entertain a motion.
I don't think it's gonna happen next year at this point, based on our new information. Another big one was some of the placeholders that we had in like subs. We had some increases in the sub-line. We decreased that with the athletic director. We kind of went through that budget, took some out. The advisors and the, oh, since we finalized the teacher contract and we sort of have a tentative agreement with the Unit D contract, we updated those salaries to reflect actuals of the new agreements. So, all those changes are in there. So, it's, you know, it's more accurate. I think overall, you know, we ended up cutting, oh, the other big one, we cut, we cut about $100,000 out of Chromebooks, okay? And I know it might seem counterintuitive that what's happening right now is with some of the uncertainty and some of the tariff stuff that was happening, a lot of Chromebooks, they either, you couldn't get them or the prices went way up. So, what we decided is we're, instead of trying to replace two grades worth of Chromebooks next year, as of right now, we're planning on trying to just replace one. And even with that, Chris thinks we might be able to hold off, oh, actually, no, I think what we did is we were trying to order, get an order in now on one of them so that we could pay for it right in July 1st, so we could try to get them since a lot of them are out of stock. But the idea was, since the price went up a little bit, not to add more money to that line and do two, but to focus on one grade and cut it back. And then, and he felt comfortable with the current state of our technology that we could, we could handle that for a year. So, the, so overall, that was, you know, we had a meeting and tried to just go through and see where we could find some savings. It's not great to tap into the circuit breaker like that, but that's why it's there. The other thing is with our out-of-district tuition costs going up so much, we will probably qualify for what's called extraordinary... there. So it's, you know, it's more accurate. I think overall, you know, we ended up cutting, oh, the other big one we cut, we cut about $100,000 out of Chromebooks, okay? And I know it might seem counterintuitive that what's happening right now is with some of the uncertainty and some of the tariff stuff that was happening, a lot of Chromebooks, they either, you couldn't get them, or the prices went way up. So what we decided is we're, instead of trying to replace two grades' worth of Chromebooks next year, as of right now, we're planning on trying to just replace one. And even with that, Chris thinks we might be able to hold off, oh, actually, no, I think what we did is we were trying to order, get an order in now on one of them, so that we could pay for it right at July 1st, so we could try to get them, since a lot of them are out of stock. But the idea was, since the price went up a little bit, not to add more money to that line and do two, but to just focus on one grade and cut it back. And then, and he felt comfortable with the current state of our technology that we could handle that for a year. So the, so overall, that was, you know, we had a meeting and tried to just go through and see where we could find some savings. It's not great to tap into the circuit breaker like that, but that's why it's there. The other thing is with our out-of-district tuition costs going up so much, we will probably qualify for what's called extraordinary relief next year, which means we should get sort of additional circuit breaker funds back that we can hopefully use to, basically, extraordinary relief has to be used in the same year. So it essentially means we would tap into less of this because we would get those funds to offset the cost next year. So overall, it's not a panic. It's just we've got to see how things fall into place, and we'll adjust based on, just like we do every year, when we see who's actually here in September, we'll make our adjustments and we'll figure it out, so. Any questions on Budget Version C? Oh, I think I should probably have you guys take a vote to approve it if you're comfortable with it, so that when it's at the town meeting, it's school committee approved.
I will entertain a motion to approve Budget Version C.
Please move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Any discussion?
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick on the Director of Special Education search update. We had a screening committee that met last, was that last week?
No.
It feels like, I don't know when it feels like. It feels like longer ago than that. Met last week, and we did our first round of interviews and moved forward three candidates. And we are bringing those candidates into the district this week. And one of them is actually here today. And hopefully, we can get all those second finalist kind of interviews together. And my hope is that by the next meeting in June, that I would have, I don't think are going to happen next year at this point based on our new information. Another big one was some of the placeholders that we had in like subs. We had some increases in the sub-line. We decreased that. With the athletic director, we kind of went through that budget, took some out. The advisors and the, oh, since we finalized the teacher contract and we sort of have a tentative agreement with the Unit D contract, we updated those salaries to reflect actuals of the new agreements. So all those changes are in there. So it's, you know, it's more accurate. I think overall, you know, we ended up cutting, oh, the other big one we cut, we cut about $100,000 out of Chromebooks, okay? And I know it might seem counterintuitive that what's happening right now is with some of the uncertainty and some of the tariff stuff that was happening, a lot of Chromebooks, they either, you couldn't get them, or the prices went way up. So what we decided is we're, instead of trying to replace two grades' worth of Chromebooks next year, as of right now, we're planning on trying to just replace one. And even with that, Chris thinks we might be able to hold off, oh, actually, no, I think what we did is we were trying to order, get an order in now on one of them, so that we could pay for it right at July 1st, so we could try to get them, since a lot of them are out of stock. But the idea was, since the price went up a little bit, not to add more money to that line and do two, but to just focus on one grade and cut it back. And then, and he felt comfortable with the current state of our technology that we could handle that for a year. So the, so overall, that was, you know, we had a meeting and tried to just go through and see where we could find some savings. It's not great to tap into the circuit breaker like that, but that's why it's there. The other thing is with our out-of-district tuition costs going up so much, we will probably qualify for what's called extraordinary relief next year, which means we should get sort of additional circuit breaker funds back that we can hopefully use to, basically, extraordinary relief has to be used in the same year. So it essentially means we would tap into less of this because we would get those funds to offset the cost next year. So overall, it's not a panic. It's just we've got to see how things fall into place, and we'll adjust based on, just like we do every year, when we see who's actually here in September, we'll make our adjustments and we'll figure it out, so. Any questions on Budget Version C? Oh, I think I should probably have you guys take a vote to approve it if you're comfortable with it, so that when it's at the town meeting, it's school committee approved.
I will entertain a motion to approve Budget Version C.
Please move, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir.
Second.
Any discussion?
Great.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Real quick on the Director of Special Education search update. We had a screening committee that met last, was that last week?
No.
It feels like, I don't know when it feels like. It feels like longer ago than that. Met last week.
The advocacy for the folks that serve on our permanent building committee, along with the folks that are looking out for this project, that there's various degrees of people that have been in the business and pushing, just pushing the envelope a little bit on asking questions about where money goes, because it's really important that we spend every last dollar on a value multiplier for the town. Taxpayer dollars are important. The taxpayers came out and supported us overwhelmingly to do this. So it was kind of like set in stone, we were going to do something with dirt, and then it was like, no, not anymore, it's not. So I want to thank Bill for that because he sort of pushed that a little bit and got people to just bring up a conversation that I think they thought might have been over, and I think it's ever-evolving. So I think the good thing is it's good dialogue. People are open-minded, and they're all trying to do a great job on building this amazing school project that we have. So thank you for that, sir.
Well, the whole committee pushed that along.
Yeah. And I think it's going to be great. It's going to make that more of a, you know, if it all pans out, it's a win-win because it should save money from hauling dirt away, and it should fill that area and to make it a more usable space, so, yeah.
It seemed like the obvious solution to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
For a million dollars, I think it's worth it.
Might be slightly less. We did some tree removal.
Yeah, I know.
[laughing]
Anything under advisory committees in the near term?
No, I think just the safety committee met, and I gave you that update kind of as a training.
And obviously, we're ongoing with negotiations with two out of three completed, so.
Yeah. Old business, I just had one, we did have one typo on those dismissal times we approved last week, so I just want to make sure people have the correct dismissal times. They're the same dismissal times we have had since I was a teacher here. The last day of school will be, it's the high school at 10:30, the middle school at 11:00, and the elementary school at 11:30. I think the middle school, the elementary school might have been listed at noon inadvertently in the last school committee packet when we did that. So I just wanted to correct that time.
Awesome. Anything under new business?
Do we need to look at a date for a meeting next week? We're talking about Steve's contract because this week is tight, the Memorial Day, and the following week, and next week's pretty open, but the week after that leads into graduation and town meeting. So I don't know whether there would be an executive session initially and then a coming over meeting to...
Sure.
I know his contract has to be open.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, I mean, I don't know if we need a date, right, this thing about the, not this week, but the following.
One of the things that Steve and I had talked about is trying to look at, just to be respectful of everybody's time, is look at the date, dates that will be up here for events anyway. And I think baccalaureate is a date that's, is that next week or the week, is it the 4th?
Fourth.
So thinking that maybe if baccalaureate, for example, is it at 6:00 or 7:00, maybe we set a meeting for like 5:30.
Okay.
Because we're going to come up anyhow, if that maybe works for folks.
That's a plan, I think.
The advocacy for the folks that serve on our permanent building committee, along with the folks that are looking out for this project, that there's various degrees of people that have been in the business and pushing, just pushing the envelope a little bit on asking questions about where money goes, because it's really important that we spend every last dollar on a value multiplier for the town. Taxpayer dollars are important. The taxpayers came out and supported us overwhelmingly to do this. So it was kind of like set in stone, we were going to do something with dirt, and then it was like, no, not anymore, it's not. So I want to thank Bill for that because he sort of pushed that a little bit and got people to just bring up a conversation that I think they thought might have been over, and I think it's ever-evolving. So I think the good thing is it's good dialogue. People are open-minded, and they're all trying to do a great job on building this amazing school project that we have. So thank you for that, sir.
Well, the whole committee pushed that along.
Yeah. And I think it's going to be great. It's going to make that more of a, you know, if it all pans out, it's a win-win because it should save money from hauling dirt away, and it should fill that area and to make it a more usable space, so, yeah.
It seemed like the obvious solution to me.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's great.
For a million dollars, I think it's worth it.
[laughing] Might be slightly less. We did some tree removal.
Yeah, I know.
[laughing]
Anything under advisory committees in the near term?
No, I think just the safety committee met, and I gave you that update kind of as a training.
And obviously, we're...